Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regular committee of the whole meeting for May the ninth, 2016. And I'd like to recognize first off that we're on the traditional territory of the Nanimo First Nations. Mr. Jackson, can we have late items, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a number here. First is adding a delegation from Mr. Tim McGrath for the Northfield Boundary Highway Nineteen Project Tender. And then under eight B, we're going to remove 2016 Social Development Grant Report. So that's completely removed. And then eight D, also a delegation from Mr. Tim McGrath regarding New Horizons for the Seniors Grant Resolution. And I believe that Counselor Hong and then Counselor Yocum have delegation requests as well.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you. I would like to add Mr. Rick Myers as a late delegation, please, with regards to a Pride event. Thank you.
Re-Pride? And what number will that end up being, Mr. Jackson?
Twelve D, Your Worship.
Twelve D.
No.
Any others? Counselor Yocum.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to add Mr. McMahon, like to invite to an art show at VIU. Thank you.
Twelve E?
Thank you.
Twelve E. I have, anyone else? I have two items. One is I would like Counsel to consider endorsement of the Fort McMurray fundraiser to be held at the Port Theatre Tuesday, May 24th. And two additional items under travel and expenses, and that is request to attend Government House, either the mayor or council representative, on May 25th to honor two of our citizens who are receiving community awards. And the second one is for the mayor to attend the Conference Board of Canada Western Business Outlook, also later this month. That's it. Any other late items? Seeing none, call for motion of the adoption of the agendas.
Your Worship, just to clarify, that's under Other Business, under eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
So, motion for the adoption of the agenda has been made.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Thorpe and seconded by Counselor Kip. Discussion? Seeing none, call question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Motion for the adoption of the minutes of 2016, April 11th.
All moved.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Pratt, seconded by Counselor Kip. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to Corporate Services. Item 7A, and that's the Advisory Committee Commission Minutes for the Minutes of the Board of Variance for February the 18th, 2016.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Beswick, seconded by Counselor Brennan. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 8A, and that is the Northfield Boundary Highway Nineteen Project Tender. The purpose is to obtain direction from council on deferring the Northfield Boundary Nineteen A Intersection Upgrade Project. And we have one delegation, Mr. Tim McGrath.
Good evening, council. Name is Tim McGrath, 431/3. I'm appearing on the matter of the Northfield Boundary Highway Nineteen Intersection. It's probably something that is very sensitive to a lot of people. A lot of people are for the pushing ahead with it as quickly as possible. There's a lot of people that look at it and say that million and a half dollars could be better spent somewhere else where, if and where the rail question comes in. One of the most recent articles on the Nanimo Info Blog is if this one doesn't go ahead, we've got 10 other intersections that we have to worry about. So this one isn't the only intersection. The other question, of course, is, and I know council has to deal with the cards that are handed to them, I'm just wondering how these cards are being dealt and how they're being stacked. This matter has already been released for tender. Why was staff not bring this to council before it was out for tender? Just, you know, as a city hall watchdog or a city hall monitor, maybe just a pain in the butt, but as somebody who appears in front of council regularly, I find it odd. Why would they not come to council and get some direction before it goes out for tender? Now are you now putting yourself up for being forced into something that you don't want to do? Certainly food for thought.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick has a question for you, I believe.
Thank you. Not, appreciate you coming. Not a question, but it may lead to a response, I'm not sure. But in deference to staff, the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities passed two resolutions of which were to do more work and investigation as it relates to rail service on Vancouver Island. And depending on what the results of the outcome are, on whether rail service is continued, discontinued, status quo, minimized, increased or decreased, or otherwise, may have significant impact on the expenditures moving forward on all of our rail crossings. And some of those rail crossings are simply for pedestrians and bikes only, and they, I think we have in the neighborhood of 20-plus in the city. So I think part of it is precedent setting, you know, that we need to do our due diligence and our homework. So when they did put the tender out, those resolutions hadn't gone to AVICC, or there was no concerns or considerations for what might be. And so I think it's, you know, before we get to the debate of it, I think that that answer, I hope that helps to answer why, when it was being tendered a year ago plus, that this wasn't given consideration because we didn't know that at the time what was going to happen at AVICC from the Regional Board and other municipalities and electoral area districts and other nations up and down the island. So I hope that helps to qualify.
And absolutely, I agree with the resolution that more investigation has to be done. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here today is because I think, unfortunately, some councillors say, oh, well, staff has always done such a good, good job and haven't done that investigation as they should, as you point out. You know, that investigation is important.
Well, in this particular case, staff didn't do a poor job because the information wasn't available to them at the time in which to undertake that part of the conversation. And post then, this conversation has taken place. And for them to come to us now and say, we may wish to recommend you defer this in consideration of, for these reasons that are contained in the report, we would be giving them all kinds of smack talk if they didn't make this type of suggestion, right? Because that's, so you have to, we have to be on balance, and I think that this, but I don't want to get into debate. Thanks. Thank you.
Counselor Kip.
Could I have staff put up the next page, please? I just want to remind us, and this is the thing that the potential with this, too, sole sourcing contracts, because it's a railway, one operator on the railway that can work on the railway, and then they subcontract from there. So the potential is, you know, over a million dollars. And to take a look at it now, because we're not certain what the rail is, and don't want to get accused of smashing the rail tobices or stopping the fast ferries, but we want to get a good business model and a business case for this. And currently, I support the fact that we're slowing this one down. That intersection isn't the best. There's a lot of them in Nanimo that aren't good. And we've looked at this for a while, and it's going to take time to spend money like that.
Well, like I said to Mr. Beswick, I'm glad that you're taking that time now to look at it again. I really am.
Thank you. And I appreciate you coming.
Counselor Pratt.
Just one comment, Mr. McGrath, to your statement around whether or not this one is a priority. I think the province identified 10 intersections that were a high priority, and three of them were here in Nanimo, and this was the third of three that was the highest priority for Nanimo. So, just so we have that clarification.
Understood. And that was well pointed out under Nanimo Info Blog, you know, that that was the case.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So to get it on the floor, can we have a motion? Thank you. Moved? If you have a second there?
Moved and seconded by Counsel Beswick. Thank you.
Discussion? Counsel Brennan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm against delaying this. This has been a priority for the community for a long time. I believe quite strongly that the community wants this project to go forward. They, every time you go through that intersection, turning left, you have some concerns, at least I do, given the number of, high number of vehicle accidents that have been there. I think the community will be very disappointed in us for doing this. The question about the railway will not be solved anytime soon, yet this intersection continues to be a huge issue for us. I think we need to go ahead with this. The fact, well, the fact of the intersection being dangerous is the primary focus. But the fact that the tender went out, I'm sure there will be costs associated with us withdrawing the tender, and that's a concern. And I'm sure it's a concern to the community that we would withdraw a tender for a project that they have been promised for years. And I'd like to see this go ahead now.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. My feeling is I want to see this intersection fixed. I think it's very dangerous. But having said that, there are other intersections that we need to look at as well and will look at in the future. I understand the significant impacts of the railway in terms of the costs to this project, and given the uncertainty of the future of rail, I'm not against delaying the project. But I don't care for the wording in the staff recommendation where it says, delay the project for one year, or until such time as there is more certainty on the future of rail. I think that could take years, and I don't want to see, I don't want to see us put off indefinitely fixing this intersection. I would be prepared to support a recommendation of delaying the project for one year and then revisit it, but I would not, I would not support an indefinite delay. So I'm having a bit of a problem with the wording on this staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Thank you. I agree with both Counselor Thorpe and Counselor Brennan on many of their points. This is a priority intersection. It is a dangerous intersection, and we have two others that are even more dangerous than this one. But we have been promised some support from the Ministry of Transport on this one, and I would like to see it move forward because I think we've put it out there, there's a huge expectation at this point of the people that use that intersection, and I do believe that they're going to be very disappointed if we don't go ahead. ICF is not, I don't believe, going to be resolved in the near future. I think it could take a long time before that's resolved. And whether or not ICF becomes a reality and the plans they have become a reality or not, I'm not 100% sure whether we should be pulling the tracks or not at this point in time. I feel that within the city of Nanimo, there may be some use for these tracks in terms of tourism. So I'm not 100% convinced that we should be tearing up tracks at any point in the near future. I also agree with Counselor Thorpe that the wording on this one is troublesome, and in actual fact, it is troublesome for me, but I'm not even really in agreement with a one-year delay. I would like to see this go ahead, and so I'm not going to vote in favor of the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
Question to staff through yourself. Is there any way to do this upgrade without upgrading the rail portion?
Your Worship, through to Counselor Fuller. When we work around the railroad tracks, we have to abide by the requirements of the Railroad Authority. And one of the requirements that they have stipulated is that any upgrades that impact the crossing have to meet the new rail crossing standards. And so the design is, in effect, adhering, for the most part, to those rail crossing standards. So if we're doing anything around the tracks that sort of triggers that, these costs come into play.
So in other words, no. Thank you. Yeah. I recognize that it's a crossing that has, you know, that whole intersection has a lot of accidents on it, but it is the third of the three top ones in the city. The costs of doing this to the standards that they want may not apply in the event that rail doesn't exist in the future. I'm not saying rip out the tracks, because Counselor Pratt is right, there could be a use for them. But the extent to which we have to adhere to certain standards would likely be a bit different, and so the costs would likely be a bit different. And then I look at something that we want to do in the city, which is expand the Ennent Trail in the south part of the city, which is going to cost about $12 million for about six or seven blocks because of eight intersections that cross the railway. And as long as there's no firm commitment to continue with the passenger rail or the use of the railway in any meaningful way, I'm not going to support those upgrades to the, to the intersection. So why would I support these? Another question, if someone could answer this. How many deaths have there been at this intersection?
Am I on here? Okay. I don't have actual stats on the number of deaths. I'm aware of at least one. I'm not aware that there's more than one. I do have some statistics on the number of accidents overall, though I can describe that if you like.
No, that's okay. You know, there's other intersections that may not involve railways that actually have a lot of accidents as well. I was in a double one at one point, just coming out onto the highway from Superstore. So I rear-ended, someone rear-ended me, it was an accident, no one was hurt. So I am going to support the motion. It may not be worded the way I would like it to be worded, but it's worded good enough for me, so I will support the motion. I'm not going to support spending money on something that we may end up ripping out in the near future.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Question to staff would be, I know the motion's to defer, is there still space to look at the design? Because I brought this, the reason I ask is, I brought this about a year, I don't know when, when I first started in council, over a year ago, and I was told in there that definitely no, it's in stone. Because I was, talked to a resident that lives right nearby, three up from there on the left, and he stated they were never consulted, and they had a say, and they're really concerned about the look, and I was just given a, you know, it was early in my term, and I would have always thought, I would advocate that people should have more of a voice. So does this give space to look at the design of the whole project? Because he's adamant the neighbors in the area did not have a say, and these people aren't going to make this story up. And then, in the way I was told outright, no in there. So now we can defer it. So I don't know the reality of this. Is there space to look at the design even?
So to answer Counselor Yocum's question, currently, the tender is out right now, and the design is complete. It's out for tender. So if we don't defer the project and the tender closes, we'll have a contract with the low bidder to build the design as it is. We can always change the design, but that would be a change order to a contract, so there'd be some consequences to that.
Okay.
If we defer the project, we'll cancel the tender, and then we can essentially do whatever council wants. We can add to the design, we can modify it. So there'll be an opportunity if we defer this.
So if it was deferred, there'd be space, at least have the conversation. I'm not saying or advocating to change the model enough totally, but at least a space for people to feel heard and have the conversation that reside right there, if it is deferred.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. I do support the staff recommendation. I think, like Counselor Thorpe, I need some clarification on the actual wording. Are we deferring this project, so we say up to one year, or is this indefinitely one year? So, you know, for example, two months from now, something happens in ICF, says we're not going to do, this is not viable, we didn't get our funding, we're not going to do this. Can then, can we re-tender? Like, in three months? I'm just saying, for the sake of argument, or are we just actually strictly waiting an entire year?
Okay, to answer Counselor Hong, so the intention of the recommendation was to defer it for up to one year. So the idea there is the design of the intersection is based on the presence of an active railroad. If the ICF gets their funding and it's clear there is going to be an active railroad, we may be able to proceed with the project much sooner than one year. The idea is that if there is no movement and no certainty within a year, then we would revisit it within a year.
Okay, so I'm going to make a recommendation later on to amend some of this wording. Couple more questions, if I may. Thank you. If passenger service wasn't to continue, but there's still freight service, if I'm not mistaken, what, twice a week that they get propane going through from?
Grain.
From propane, from one to up there? Is that going to continue with or without ICF? And would that impact the crossings?
So my understanding is that at the Northfield Crossing, they have six trips a week, so three round trips per week for trains. And I'm not sure what their, I mean, what their future plans are. I can't predict what'll happen in the future with that.
But if they were to continue using that service three times a week, or even once a week, or once a month, we would still have to build to new code with crossings, correct?
Correct. As long as there's an active railroad there, we're required to adhere to the standards that are prescribed.
Okay. Even though they go, like, really, really slow, it doesn't really matter?
The only difference is the speed of the train has an impact on how far in advance of the crossing you have to detect the train. So at the last council meeting, when we came and we, you know, it was the tender, it was the tender recommendation. We made an indication that in the future, there may be a cost to upgrade the advanced warning for the train. So if the dayliner comes back, there'll be an additional cost to this at about $560,000 to detect the train in advance because it's faster.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counsel Brennan.
Thank you. The only thing that would change my mind on this is if you told me there had been no community consultation. Is that correct?
There's been significant stakeholder consultation. We've had a website up for well over a year. We've talked about this particular project at the hospital area open house. There was a number of people that came to speak about this one. We haven't had an open house specifically about this project, but certainly, there's been a lot of information out there, and a lot of people have come in and talked to staff, and we've talked to people directly, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm still of the view that we should go forward on this. I think that the work has been done. We've got the design, and I know that it was fairly costly, and we have, I know, had it at this table, at least on one or two occasions. You know, I fear that if we say no to this on the basis solely of cost, that we will be falling into that terrible situation where we know the cost of everything and the value of nothing. I think a delay, again on this, would just mire us in more indecision. And that's something that I think we all have resolved, we want to move forward on things and not get mired in massive indecision and fear of making decisions. It's far more complicated to stop that railway, to finally say, put an end to it, than will be solved in one year. That's a question that if it was to even be, if it was even broached, it would take more, much longer than a year to resolve that question. And I don't think that the community wants us to wait any longer to fix what is, for the community, a very problematic intersection that they have been promised for years will be fixed. So, nothing I've heard or read has changed my mind. I think we need to go ahead on this.
Counselor Pratt.
Thank you. I have a question for staff, and I'm hoping this isn't an unfair question. I'm wondering why we picked this intersection over the other two that are more dangerous than this intersection? Was it because the Ministry of Transport zeroed in on this intersection? Or was there another reason for it?
I'm not sure this is, you know, the third most dangerous intersection. I mean, we've looked, there's a couple of factors that go into, you know, whether an intersection is dangerous or not. It has to do with the traffic volumes, has to do with the consequences of accidents that occur. In this particular case, it's got a high number of accidents that are occurring. They tend to not be the high, high consequence. A lot of them are the rear-ender type collisions of the movement from Northfield onto the highway. And so there's, you know, there's other intersections in town, and some of them are essentially ministry facilities. So, I mean, certainly, this is definitely one of the higher concern intersections in town, and this is definitely a priority.
So that makes sense to me. I do know, I mean, just having worked in that area and used that intersection over, I'd say, 15 years, fairly constantly over the weeks and months that I was working in that area, it is, I think, a really dangerous intersection, not only for the cars, but also for people walking across that intersection and biking across that intersection. And because it's part of the trail where people are going from one piece of the trail to the other side of that intersection, to the rest of the trail that goes along the highway, I do feel like it is an extremely dangerous intersection with an accident just waiting to happen all the time. I'm not going to change my mind on this. I really, I'm not going to vote in favor of deferring. Also, I really think if it's only costs that we're looking at, those costs are going to do nothing but go up. And I'm glad that the Ministry of Transportation is willing to wait. If we, if this is passed, then they will wait and partner with us a year from now. They've indicated that, so that's good. But I'm not convinced that it's something we should be deferring, so thank you for your information. I appreciate that.
Counselor Kip.
If nobody's willing to change their mind, I could keep my mouth shut if anybody wants to vote, but I'm in favor of delaying it for a number of reasons. Okay, I'll go ahead. Public input on an intersection, not always do we have that. It depends on it. The design, I'm not fussy about the way it was designed. I saw one from a normal citizen who wasn't an engineer give up a pretty good idea. I've designed a few roads in my life when I worked for logging companies and different things in my life. The train, wow. Everything we do depends on the train, and it costs so much money. It's like, we're paying for a train, but it's not there. We're constantly paying for a train. The province has neglected that road for decades. I've sat here and listened to the same debate. They should have put acceleration and deceleration lanes into that intersection decades ago. That means coming down. into that intersection decades ago. That means coming down the highway, you shouldn't have to wait to turn that corner. It could be a deceleration lane and an acceleration lane. That's where most of it happens. People are looking back to see, oh, the guy's gone. They look up and the guy stopped because the car's coming and they stop in front of him. That's the accidents in that. So it's the province. So, and having a road direct to Northfield, it is not built for the major truck traffic or stuff. People are going to cut through Northfield. Every time our biolog guys go to sleep at night after 4:30 when they're not here, up go the trucks up Northfield to catch the parkway. Boom, 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 boom. That road's not built for it. It's tearing it apart. So the design we have now puts traffic fast onto Northfield and then has that big loop thing that we've designed, right? And so it really is. And I think our direct traffic for our citizens is to the hospital as quick as we can and get hot cars to the hospital. So coming down the highway or coming up the highway, getting them to the hospital. Um, we're mired not in fear of decisions, we're mired in fear. The roads are not bad. The drivers are lousy. The drivers are absolutely lousy in this town and across most of B.C. So we're not mired in fear of decisions. We're mired in fear. And so for me, delay this one. When we're looking at the core review coming up, we're going to have some changes in our financing, hopefully in our directions, and I believe we'll be better. And the province has bailed on their costs, of course, because they don't want to spend any money on it. And they haven't for years. And we're picking up the costs of the intersections connected to a road we've never wanted to own. Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have not yet made up my mind on this. It's a tough one for me and I am interested in the debate and the arguments on both sides. I do have a question for staff and it comes back to, um, the, um, the future of the rail. And I don't think we should just get sidetracked onto the future of ICF. Uh, but I'm curious to know if staff have spoken to the users of the rail, I'm thinking of the propane transportation. Do we know if they intend to keep using the rail for their transport? Has that discussion happened?
We haven't asked specifically whether or not they have intention to carry on with the propane contract or not. I mean, every time we've talked to Southern Rail, they've always indicated a fairly positive outlook in terms of their business and so on. But, but, you know, we, we don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that's the last speaker, but I just wanted to add a couple of things. And that is that, uh, there's a term being used here called active to indicate that there's actually a rail rolling on the track. That doesn't always indicate active. Active is the opposite of decommissioned. So in the railway business, there's two, there's two statuses. One's either active or decommissioned. And we've not decommissioned any portion of the, uh, of the ENN with the exception of the Lake Couch and Spur. So this is an active railway. We have to remember it's an active railway. There's two, uh, there's two numbers there. One is for, uh, is for the works as it stands today on this project. Thank you very much. And that is the, uh, that is the upgrade of the rail hardware associated with this project. And the other one is the potential future costs. So that if the entire project, uh, funding comes through, then that would be required. That's the early detection, uh, additional items. So really what we're facing right now, we can easily defer the potential future costs because they've done that in two other jurisdictions. They've done that in Langford. Uh, Langford's building a trail alongside and, uh, they've deferred those works because there it's an active railway, but not operating as it stands right now. So there's no trains to worry about because the decision's been made not to operate on that track for the time being until the, uh, until the upgrades. Here it's opposite of that. Um, there's another one in Duncan. It's exactly the same thing. They've agreed with ICF that they will not go ahead with that work until such time as trains start rolling again. Um, current, currently the upgrade that we're talking about, the major amount is from Victoria to Courtney. We have no idea whether or not that could change. Um, if the, uh, if something, uh, if something happens, uh, over the next three to four months, uh, it could be a possibility there'd be another iteration of this project. It could be that, uh, the, the portion from Nanaimo Harbor to, uh, to Port Alberni remain intact. It could be that the portion down south from, uh, Goldstream into Victoria remain intact and be declared, uh, active and operating. And the rest of it could be abandoned as railway. Um, I, uh, I agree with Counselor Kip that, uh, there should have been deceleration lanes there, same as on Dorman coming southbound from, uh, from Bowen Road. Um, I will be supporting this, uh, with, uh, now, I don't know whether there can be an amendment made that we, uh, that we support this project with the direct costs of the upgrading of the hardware today and leaving the other portion, the other 560,000, uh, pending a change in the railway status. But it's an active railway right now. Counselor Hong.
Can I also make the motion right now then to change up to that the council defer the Northfield Boundary Intersection Project for up to one year? That'll give us clarif, more clarification on that. And then what Counselor Thorpe says, or until such time as there's more certainty on the future of rail. Is that part relevant? Do we need that part? Or can we just stop at a up to one year period?
So on the, uh, on the proposed amendment to change it to up to one year, do you have a, does there a second to that?
And delete the last part.
I had made a motion already. Was it not made?
The original motion is on the floor. So I think what's being discussed is amend that original motion.
Yes.
Well, can I, can I speak to that?
Well, I'll second your amendment if that's what you require.
Well, from my perspective, if the mayor says something could happen in three months and if we're saying to delay the project for one year, then we're eliminating the three-month thing. So this one for one year or until such time as there's more certainty. Our fear here, as I suggest, that fear thing again, is that it, it's going to never happen and we're delaying it forever, that fixing of it.
Yeah.
But there's two sides to that. The uncertainty is whether it could start up in three months or in a year and a half. And I think that's the uncertainty. So I'd like it to be as open-ended as possible, but to delay it for now. That's my, my idea in moving the motion. Thank you.
So would it be possible to say that the council defer the Northfield Boundary Intersection until such time as there is more certainty in the future of rail? That's as open, that's the complete opposite spectrum, but.
Mr. Jackson.
Your worship, just to clarify that what is on the floor right now is the amendment. And the amendment is to add the words up to after four and before the word one and then period after year. So the last part would say project for up to one year, period. So the motion on the floor is just to amend.
Great. So seeing no further speakers on that, can we have, uh, we'll call the question on the amendment to add, insert the words up to. All those in favor? Opposed? Show that Mayor McKay is opposed. All right. So the motion passes. Now for the main motion, as amended, that council defer for up to one year, the, pardon me, defer the Northfield Boundary Highway 198 Intersection Project for up to one year or until such time as there's more certainty.
It's gone.
It's gone?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. For up to one year. Okay. Read it again. The council defer the Northfield Boundary Highway 198 Intersection Project for up to one year. Nice and neat. Okay. Call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Show that Councillors Pratt, uh, McKi, Brennan and Mayor McKay opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, 8C Nanaimo Food Share Society Urban Farm Project. And the purpose is to obtain council direction regarding the provision of a thousand dollar grant to Nanaimo Food Share Society to offset count, uh, costs associated with the supply of water to an urban farm project on the five acre site at 933 Park Avenue. Moved by Counselor Kip. Is there a second to the recommendation? Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Brennan.
Could I ask, um, staff where, where the $1,000 would come from? Would that be from the 90,000 that we get from the casino or where would that be?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, New Horizons for Seniors Grant Resolution, uh, Resolution. The purpose is to obtain council support for the application to the Government Canada's New Horizons for Senior Grant, Seniors Grant Program. And we have one delegation and that's Mr. Tim McGrath.
Good evening, Council. My name's Tim McGrath, 431 Third. Um, regarding the New Horizons, I was sitting around having coffee with 10 other politically concerned citizens here in the city. We read the report. We're having a lot of difficulty understanding exactly what the report is for. Um, there's no budget attached to it. There is, um, supposed to start on the 2nd of May. Still haven't got much really knowing what, what it's involving. Um, I think that the matter should be deferred until, um, staff can appear and answer all the questions. That simple. Why it wasn't presented ahead of time so that we could mount an argument, as I noticed Ms. Brennan quickly pointing out other people, um, it should have been presented in the report so that the citizens can read it. And then the citizens can respond to it. Not done backhanded, under the door, without a decent report. Obviously, it's, it's coming to council very late. I don't know when the original application was made. Obviously, it's, you know, the money is here or, or about to be here. Um, we're not exactly sure on that wording. Um, why wasn't it brought to council before it started? Why wasn't, you know, what, why is staff doing this process where it's coming after the decisions have already been made? They've already made their decision. They're not looking for council input. They're looking for council's rubber stamp. That's all it is. You know, Mr. Horn could have been here a year ago or whenever the application was made and, and it could have been discussed at that time along with a proper budget and along with knowing exactly what was going to happen. Is this for staff administration costs? What is the extra, uh, ongoing 1.3 million dollars? There's a lot of questions here. And if you approve it blind, I think you're making a sad mistake. I think the, the matter should have been brought up. It should have been addressed. It should have been presented to the public and the public have an opportunity to respond. Instead, what we're getting is slide it in the back door. Council will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. See no questions? Nope, there's no questions. Nope. Very good. Do we, there's a recommendation on page 19. Counselor Brennan, thank you. And seconded by Counselor Pratt. Okay, it's on the floor. Counselor Fuller.
I'm trying to figure out what the project exactly is. That's one thing. Uh, it says that the grant has been awarded for the project with a start date of May 2nd. So we've already passed that by a week. Um, I'm hoping to get some answers from staff. And why are we even doing this if the, if everything's been approved? I mean, it's already awarded. That's what it says. So, and what is the, the project? There's nothing in here that says exactly what the project is. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Horn.
Sure. Let me give you a little background on the project. There's five partners to this project. Uh, the total value of the contract is 2.7 million, 2.07 million dollars. So it's a significant investment in seniors in our community. The genesis of the application was made because the funding proposal came out from the federal government that said we wanted to reduce social isolation in seniors for a variety of reasons. So we put together a project with five of us. Um, each one of us is doing a separate element to this project. The one before you is the, the one that we've agreed to put together. And again, the goal of that is to reduce social isolation in seniors. All the projects that working together have that same goal. And there's going to be a physical location, which is going to be a seniors center of sorts. And, uh, the other partners are addressing things like marginalized populations, helping seniors to, to find adequate housing, all sorts of things like that. So there's a range of things that are being done by the partners. What's before you is the very specific piece that we said we would take on, which is two parts. One is to help seniors reduce their socialization by engaging in community activities and, and, and community processes. And really the second part is to look at how we support seniors in being participants, fully participating in the life of the community. And again, we're talking about seniors that are marginalized, who are socially isolated, who may be confined to their homes, who may for various reasons not have much connection in their life. So the goal of the project is to help those people foster connections and our part of it is to help them feel valued. So the proposal seeks to do two things is to increase the value that seniors feel. And it does one by helping them to have a role in making the community more age-friendly. It's a one part of that, which is about addressing the physical infrastructure in our community, things like benches, curb cuts, the very small little details that allow seniors to be mobile and to go to places and use the bus system, et cetera. We're going to put together a seniors advisory council and they're going to make recommendations to us about how we might change some of those things. Rather than having recommendations come forward that are not resourced, we applied for a budget to, to manifest that. So we have $150,000 in this particular project that'll be aimed at physical improvements in our city. We have a three-year timeline to execute that. And we'll put together a seniors council and we'll ask them what kind of changes they'd like to make, given the budget constraints and the realistic what we can actually do. And we'll use those recommendations to bring them forward for, for consideration. So that's step one. The second step is to help them feel valued, is to help them share their histories with the rest of us. We've talked a lot about the generation that's now into their 80s and 90s and the kind of experiences they've had. And we want to share that with the younger generations so that they begin to feel that their life experience has some value. They can share their stories, talk about their histories. We want to have some people talk about the local history of Nanaimo as they grew up here, what it was like back in the day, so to speak. We'll also have seniors who talk about histories from other parts of the world where they've come from so they can share those experiences. They call out the great generation. They had to go through a lot of things, wars, depressions, post-war stuff. It's quite a remarkable generation. And I think they have a lot to teach us. Giving them an opportunity to teach us that or to provide their stories about their lives, I think is going to help them feel more valued. That was the proposition we put forward. So the second component is to give them an opportunity to do that in a formal way by providing a forum with speakers and with audiences so that they can come and tell their stories about their lives. So we're doing two things as part of this and the partners are doing other pieces. But our little piece is a three-year and it's fully funded by the New Horizons Program under the federal government. So the only really, uh, city resource is directed to this is staff time, basically my staff time. In this, however, in the budget, I have allocated funding to pay someone to do the work. So that way I can oversee the whole thing, but it's not me that's going to be doing all the work because it's just one staff person. So we have built in a budget that minimizes the impact on staff resources. And we believe that the totality of the project, which is about connecting seniors to the community, the totality is going to be much larger than our 8% piece of the pie, which is quite smart. But the partners are doing fairly significant pieces of work around this. And so that would be the goal going forward, but to put together the three-year project with them. The funding has been approved. It is subject from my side to council's approval that we go forward on this. And of course, if you didn't want me to, that would be the end of that. So it's certainly within your hands to determine whether this is something we want to take on or not. But again, I made sure in the funding application that my resources were husbanded and that everything was fully paid for by the federal government. Thank you very much.
Just a follow-up to that. You really didn't answer the, my main question. Application's approved. This says that council support the application.
Yeah.
The application has already gone in, been approved. It says that there's a start date of May 2nd. So I'm going to presume that on May 2nd it was started. I'm glad you gave us the information about the project. I think it's great. But if the app, if the application has already gone through and been approved, why do we need to support the application? It's already there. It's already been approved. I can't figure that out. It's not that I wouldn't if we needed to approve it, but it says we've already got it. So it just doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Horn.
So my goal would be to, through, Chair, to Counselor Fuller? So my goal would be through the chair to councillor Fuller, would be to support the idea of us addressing seniors' issues in the community. It's not so much will you support the application, because it has been inputted and received and allocated, right? So it would really be about, is this the direction you want us to go? Is this the kind of support you want to provide to seniors? So that's really the more broader question. And just to be fair, we put in a lot of applications for funding. Some of them come home, and some of them don't. This one came home, we put it in a year and a half ago, and it came home like at the very last second, they phoned us up and said, several weeks ago, oh, by the way, you've got the money. Wow, that was a surprise, because we hadn't heard anything for about 10 months or 11 months on this. So, you know, we've thrown a lot of applications in, and some of them, like I say, come home and some don't, so.
I don't have a problem with that, but you're not asking us to support the program. I mean, you're asking us to support the application. That's what it says here, that's what the recommendation in front of us is right now. So we could all raise our hands and pass the support of an application that's already been approved. If you're wanting us to support the project, then one would presume you would come and say, we want you to support this project with which this money we've already got is going forward, and then give us some details of the project. But you're asking us to support an application that has already been through, gone through.
Yeah, so I'm asking you to support the project, I guess.
Right now, no, you're asked, the motion is that we support the application.
Make a change.
So what can we change? How can we amend this to do it?
Thank you.
Receive your report for information.
Mr. Semer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think what, I share some concerns about the report on a number of items, but this is my understanding, is that the City of Nanaimo has received the funding and will be administering and reporting on that money back to the funder, and our internal processes don't allow staff to flow through money to third parties without council approval. So that's why it's come to this table. So the City received it, it's decided to allocate that funding to a particular body, but ultimately, the City is responsible for complying with the terms and conditions that the federal government would assign to these monies. And I think that's the context that we're in, so the motion should reflect that, but I think if the case, the City is going to be responsible for ensuring compliance with the terms and conditions of a funding program, perhaps it may be more ideal for council to have that in front of them, to make sure that it's within our realm and jurisdiction that we can actually oversee and monitor this. So my recommendation would be to, I don't know if it's table or defer, this report to next week so that we can get that information in front of you.
I wonder if I might, I heard the word used, and that was, I read this as allocation of this grant money. So the 168,360 of the $1.3 would be allocated to this project. That's the way I read it. Am I right or wrong?
Well, it's one component of a larger project, so, yeah, but we don't get any of the other money. That goes to the other partners. So the total project funding, as it says, is $2.07 million, the $1.3 number's off there. So 2.7, 2.07, and the other partners, they receive their allocation, and they, they're contractually obliged to spend that, so.
Thank you. I do have five more speakers. councillor Bessick, defer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Horn. It does seem like there's a considerable amount of information that is supplemental to the report, and that might have been a little bit more clear or helpful. I heard, I just have a couple of questions. The New Horizons award of $168,360 is over a three-year period. Do we receive all of our funds upfront and then we budget that over the three years? Or do we receive a certain percentage in different milestones? How does that work? Please.
Sir, sir, the chair. So the way it works is we have a cash flow projection that we provided in terms of our budget on the application. So based on that cash flow projection, the federal government will send us money on the schedule that's set out in the budget application. So it doesn't come all in front, they, there's times when the cash flows are high, and they send more money, and then when they're low, they don't. So it's based on the cash flows that are sent to them in the budget, and then they send us a cheque every month relative to those cash flows.
Thank you. Another question, if I may, please. You, I heard you say it's a portion of a $2.7 million project, and in the report, it says $1.3 million with, you stated with five other partners. So is it reasonable for me to assume that those five other partners have also applied for the New Horizons, and they were successful as well?
Yes.
And we're going to receive, among the five or six of us, I guess five plus us or four plus us?
Five including us, yeah.
Five including us. That will receive $1.3 million total, the five of us?
So the total amount received by all partners in the project will be 2.07 million.
2.70?
2.07.
2.07, okay, thank you.
My $1.3 number was a rough guess, based on what I knew, but I had that confirmed by the project lead just this morning, so it's actually 2.07.
Thanks. And my last question. You've heard me say this before, but I hope it's my last question. What happens at the end of three years?
The federal government has suggested that we try to find a way to make this project sustainable, and the partners have submitted a sustainability plan, and, but that's really the partners that I'm working with on this one. The sustainability is around the physical location that they've identified, they want to have a physical site. So the project plan is to have one of the partners, not us, but one of their nonprofit partners, continue to host this. And the federal government is acknowledging that, you know, in three years, it may not be that this continues, but they would like us to find a way to make it sustainable, ongoing, in other words. So we'll be continuing to seek funding from the provincial government and other sources through that three-year period, to try to ensure that we can continue this work past the three-year timeframe.
And of course, there will be a manner in which we determine its successes and/or its failures, or, hoping that there is none, of course, but.
Yeah. There is an evaluator built into the project, they're funded as well, so there's an ongoing evaluation component to this contract, and so that's pretty extensive, because they require quite a bit from the federal government. So they'll be starting with us right from day one, the evaluator, and working right through to the end of the project, and submitting quarterly reports, I gather, to the federal government around their evaluation of the work. So they'll be able to pinpoint any successes and failures as we go along, they're not going to wait till the end of the project. It's an ongoing evaluation process that's built into the, into the work. Thank you.
councillor Hong.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions, but I want to make some comments first. Congratulations on getting the money. It's great. Congratulations also to the Women's Resource Centre, the Nanaimo Hospital Foundation Lifeline and others, and the Nanaimo Family Life Association. $2 million, that's pretty impressive.
It is.
That's $2 million out of our pockets that we don't have to give to these organizations. So congratulations to these groups that got this money. I'm pleased. It's free money, I love free money. It's great. Something that we don't have to pay for, and if it's a program, even if this is a seed program, which is what I hope that we do, is seed events and organizations so they can continue on to find other methods within the three years to operate within their own means. Great. Works great. I don't care if we get any money after three years, I'm hoping that we can figure out how we can make it work. It's amazing. One of the things that, you know, you talked about, you want to do seniors, we talked about doing youth during our council breaks. Let's, 15-minute break, let's get a story. Get a videographer, record some of these, put them up, throw youth, throw a senior, tell us a story. It's great. I think, I think this is amazing, and I can't complain about free money. So that's one thing that I'm interested in, but I think councillor Bessick got his questions answered with the discrepancy between 1.3 and the 2.07, so I don't really need to wait. I'm willing to make the decision today, I don't think I need to defer it. Give us a staff report later, because this is free money, go spend it. At this point, for me, if it's not going to impact our budget implications, and if we can get a program started sooner than later, you know, we keep talking about dragging our feet, let's get it started. Because if this is what the money that was used for, that you applied for, I don't think we can change it and say, hey, let's go do something else with this money, because it's not going to work. So let's spend it. Thank you.
councillor Pratt.
Thank you, I couldn't agree more with councillor Hong. I think we just need to be really happy that we do have this grant, and that it is going to be addressing marginalized seniors in our community. I think there is an enormous need for that in our community, and it's something that's pretty invisible. But it's something that's really, really important. I love the idea that seniors will be encouraged to tell their stories and share them with, I'm assuming through maybe the schools or whatever, I'm not sure what those avenues will be right now, but I am interested to know what those will be eventually. I just do not see a downside to this. It is, I commend our staff for making the application and being successful in getting it. I am fully in support of it.
councillor Kip.
Am I in a conflict? I'm going to be 65 soon.
Do you have any stories?
And you looked at me when you said, "back in the day, John." Good discipline. I'm just going to say, this is money we're getting from our other tax dollars, so it's coming in from the feds and the province, so if somebody's applying for it out there, we might as well apply for it. And I really appreciate that staff does hunt these down, not always knowing if we'll get them or if we get our share. Seniors, mental illness, addictions, youth programs, homelessness, standards of maintenance, Aboriginal housing, RCMP as social workers, grants to women's groups, prostitution grants, human trafficking. We have one person that goes over these, our social planner, and it's a lot of things. I appreciate this, and when you see that, like Jerry said, Nanaimo Family Life does tons of volunteer work in the community, the Women's Resource Centre, the Hospital Foundation Lifeline, the volunteers in that are phenomenal, and the staffing. Always the fear for the public is we get $2 million startup fee, and then it costs us another $2 million in a few years, but I suggest that's still $0.50. So if this program could run on a few million dollars for three or extend it to four years, that's excellent, because I think it has a lot of positive stuff. And seniors having it tougher. I mean, it's a known fact now, seniors having it tougher. Nobody thought it was going to be this expensive to live, you know? So I hope I'm not in a conflict of interest. Thank you.
councillor Brennan.
Well, if you are councillor Kip, I am too, because I've already turned 65, so, but I intend to speak on this. Social isolation, I think, is one of those indicators where, that indicate that a senior is going to have to move into residential care. It really does contribute to having to move into residential care. So if we can contribute to seniors staying in situations where they're not having residential care, then we're doing a really good thing. This isn't free money, it's, as councillor Kip pointed out, it's tax dollars that we've already sent to Ottawa that are coming back to our communities. That's what this, these kinds of programs do, is they, they send our money back to us for programs that we identify as being important. The only other thing I'll say, well, also, this kind of program can fit really well into any poverty reduction plans that we might want to work on. Seniors are having struggles, so this kind of integration is really a good assister for reducing seniors' poverty. And finally, I remember, I don't know, maybe 15, 20 years ago, the MP for Nanaimo, MP Bob Ringma, sent money back to Ottawa and said, no, Nanaimo doesn't need this, and of course, Nanaimo absolutely went wild. The citizens of Nanaimo recognize that this is our money coming back to us, this is a good thing. We don't need to quibble over whether we support the application or the program. If we follow the recommendation as it is, supporting the application, in essence, also supports the program. So I would not support deferring this for another week. I'd like to see us go ahead on this tonight.
Thank you. councillor Thorpe.
Thanks, Chair. Very quickly, I'm in the same boat as councillor Kip, but I agree with what he said and also with what councillor Brennan said. I did have some questions when I read this regarding the wording, but from what I've heard this evening, those questions have been answered, and I think it's quite clear now what the intent of the recommendation was. I think this is a very worthwhile project, and I see that the funding has been approved. Good for staff for going after it, as somebody else said. Maybe the wording should have been different in the recommendation, but I have no problem supporting this tonight. I see no need to delay it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Fuller.
Okay, I don't want to delay it either, but the way the motion is read, all you're doing is approving an application that has already been in and been approved. It's supporting an application. Is, can, now I can't even remember, Chris has lost me.
Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, is there any way you can reframe this motion so that it makes sense?
I believe that, I believe that the city manager would like to chime in.
Because I agree with everything everybody has said, this is a great program, it's fantastic program. But I'm going into the process, and if we can't get the process straight for something as simple as this, what the heck are we doing?
So let's replace application with allocation. So you're approving the allocation.
Yes.
Of X, Y, and Z to.
Allocation.
And that should meet the required authorizations so that he can expend the funds.
The wording's a little clunky, if you just simply change that word.
Just say allocation to.
Allocation. The, of the Government of Canada, Ministry of Employment, Social Development for three years.
Of the, allocation out.
Yeah. So I'll move that.
I'll second.
Very seconded it.
Okay. Mr. Jackson.
No, that's just a motion to amend, that's on the floor.
So, is there anybody that wishes to speak to the motion to amend? The amendment? Want to speak to the amendment? Okay. councillor Fuller.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. No further speakers with respect to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, motion carries.
Who opposed?
He was a little slow in the uptake.
Come up, Lee.
Okay, so now the main motion as amended. I see councillor Pratt is on the speakers list.
I'd only like to say one more thing, and that is, a couple of people have mentioned the fact that it's only for three years, but what I know from being in the nonprofit industry for the last 20 years, is that when you have three years' worth of funding for something, that gives you enough time to grow a program that then becomes viable, and other people will fund it. So I have no problem with that three years, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I think it's time to call the question.
Okay. Calling the question on the motion as amended. Does anybody need it read? Okay. Very good, okay. So call the question. All is in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Next item, 11A. Mr. Jackson, 11A, was that the request?
Your Worship, that's Fort McMurray fundraiser endorsement.
Great, I got them backwards then, sorry. Move. Okay, so, the reason for that is that, is that, as council probably knows, there is a, we get hundreds at the city, between the city, and I believe we probably get 10 or 15 a month at the Port Theatre for, for the waiving of fees, or the significant reduction of fees for events. In discussion with mister, with the manager of the Port Theatre, he advises me that it goes a long way for them to be able to move the project forward if it gets council's endorsement. So they can look after it from there. If it is a council-endorsed event, they can, they can, they can go a long way to make that event happen. And I think the information I got via email correspondence with council was that everybody on council wanted to support this event. It's a fundraiser for Fort McMurray to be held on May 25th, May 24th, pardon me, and it is, there'll be up to 19 dance groups that will be performing at the Port Theatre. And they're trying to work out the details right now with respect to admission and cost and so on and so forth, and what other items that might be involved. I believe there's going to be silent auctions and so on and so forth, and that they, they look for.
And that they, they look forward to our endorsement. That's the only way that the Port Theatre Society can actually provide the project free of charge. All right. Ms. Samra, did you?
Yeah, I just, I would caution counsel. Certainly, the endorsement of the, of that fundraiser is a fabulous thing, and counsel can certainly endorse it, but I, I struggle to see the connection between a council motion and the authority of a board of directors to decide and make decisions on their own. You don't want to be seen as, I'm just cautious of the jurisdiction and the divide between decision-making. So by all means, a motion endorsing this type of event is a wonderful thing, and if it goes the distance to hailing them do that. But ultimately, it's that board of directors and the operator of that facility that needs to make the decision if they're going to be waiving the fees or not.
As was explained to me, they will not waive the fees unless they have our endorsement. So I.
I already moved it.
Okay. Counselor Yocum, you were on there for a speaker. Did you want to move the?
Yeah, I was going to move, and then after we get in the, if we get seconded, I have a comment.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Do we have the, do we have an accurate reflection of the motion?
The council endorsed the Fort McMurray fundraiser to be held on May twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
That's what I heard.
Thank you. Did you wish to speak to it, Counselor?
Yes, yes, quickly. I just want to thank, I think her name is Ms. Stewart from Vibes Studio, that's quarterbacking this event, sent us all emails and volunteered her own time with the great work she does at Vibes Studio, know firsthand from as my daughter goes there. But nevertheless, I'm a little concerned now. I have no problem making a motion if it has to get this ball rolling and get it passed, but I'm not in support of a board of governors offloading maybe a decision, a tough decision onto us as they're putting a position to do it. But nevertheless, I'm in support of this cause, and while aware we're going to get million requests, but this is a cause where I think the whole country should and has to step forward as we'd hope if we were in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt?
Thank you. I, I support this a hundred percent. I think anybody who knows what's happened up in Fort McMurray would have no trouble supporting anything that will support the people up in Fort McMurray. It's a real good reminder to all of us of how vulnerable our communities can be, even though we take so much for granted in that regard. So I am definitely in favor of counsel endorsing this fundraiser.
Thank you. Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. I understand the information that our city managers presented to us, and so much as this being a political decision, and how could you possibly not support this? It's not possible to even contemplate not supporting this, recognizing what the mayor said about hundreds of requests for fee wavering and so on and so forth. I'm sure there's many that don't get here, that are dealt with at the inner offices of whatever the facilities are. I would hope that they have some latitude to make those decisions. I would like this not to be politicized. I think it's a great thing for the organizer to have done in such short notice, obviously. And I'll be supporting it, of course. But I understand where we might find ourselves in, in a situation where something else might come in front of us again, and we say no for whatever reason. I'm not sure what that might be, but I think it's just because it becomes political, and we have to be a little bit sensitive and cautious. But God forbid if we didn't support this. I mean, how cold and how callous and how, I, it just wouldn't make sense to me. So I'll certainly, of course, be supporting. Now, what it doesn't tell me is to what degree we're supporting it. It doesn't say it's free, it doesn't say it would have been twenty-five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, it's a not-for-profit event. Like, I don't know how all the minutia works out, but on that, and so to whatever degree of support that this, the intent of this motion is, I'm sure that's been well thought out, and I support whatever that is one hundred percent, because I don't know what it is. I'll support it. And I don't know what I'm supporting, other than we're waiving something, and I don't know what that is.
Counselor Hong?
Thank you. I do support the idea, like our CAO and Counselor Bestwick. I do have concerns, because this, this is a huge tragedy, and for their board of directors not to recognize the value and the importance of this fundraising effort, and having it forced upon us to get an endorsement, it kind of gives me some funny tinglings in my spine. We gladly supported this, whether this be at the conference center, the Port Theatre, the NPA, SFN, wherever. If someone were to come and ask for support, I don't have a problem giving it. But I just wouldn't have to hope that it depended on us for that venue to waive these fees for this cause. Like, if this is political, like, I don't like how this is coming out, because they should do it out of the goodness of their own heart, because they care about Fort McMurray and Canadians, like we do. So, a little hesitant. I will support it, but still is a little hesitant about their board not supporting it without our endorsement. Thank you.
Counselor Fuller?
This is another bizarre thing in an evening of bizarre things, in my opinion. Yeah, excuse me for going off on all these things. I'm not having a great day right now. Counselor Bestwick hit the nail right on the head. We all agree that a fundraiser for Fort McMurray is a totally honorable thing, and we're going to endorse this. But we don't know what we're endorsing from the port board's part. Are we endorsing the port only waiving half their fees? Are we endorsing the Port Theatre only waiving a quarter of their fees? This is hugely political, and why the heck they would do this and bring it to, and bring it to a council meeting is beyond me. They could have easily said, "They're bored. Yeah, we'll waive the fees. This is a fantastic idea. We're fully in support of it." But now they're saying, "Yeah, we'll do something, but now we want counsel to endorse it." Well, of course, we endorse the fundraiser. And I'll support the motion, but this is beyond belief, the way this has come forward.
Ms. Samra?
So fortunately, I was able to find the co-management agreement, and it just might be a misunderstanding, because it's a complex relationship between the city and the Port Theatre Society. But we have a co-management agreement, and I've just scanned it quickly, and they have the, the city grants to the society the right to manage and operate the theatre for the term in accordance with this agreement. That's section three. And then it also goes on to say that the society in three point three is responsible for all aspects of the operation of the theatre. So it might just have been a misunderstanding that they thought they needed counsel's approval, but they're the operator. You guys have the agreement in place. So I see no harm in an endorsement motion going forward, and I'm happy to speak with anybody from the society to go through this agreement following the meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Samra, for saying that, because I wanted to make the point that the Port Theatre is not a private business. They are a nonprofit. They operate the theatre on our behalf, and they report back to us every year about how their expenditures, what their expenditures was, what the revenues were. This is simply, I think, a tip of their hat to us to let us know that this is happening, and just asking for our, a nod of agreement. I don't think the Port Theatre has, has really been as bad as maybe we sort of originally may have thought. I think this is simply their recognition of their status and their reporting relationship with us.
Thank you. Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. Thanks for the quick insight on the city and the society's working contract agreement. I honestly don't think that this is bad. I think this is probably an unintended consequence of their desires to do something good. And this is not unlike for me, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the farmer's market at Bevan Park, when we had the farmer's market at Bevan Park, ask for a relaxation on their rental fees. And it's because the manner in which the contracts are exercised and with our third parties, and probably not something that we would have done otherwise, but had to come to us just because that's our practice, and that's our procedure, and that's our protocols, and that's how everybody protects their ass. So I think it's a good thing, and I think it's a good thing that people are paying attention to their operational restrictions, if they feel they have any, as opposed to coming in front of us and pleading for forgiveness after the fact. So I see this as a really good thing. It's not a bad thing, and I'm anxiously looking forward for us to vote on this.
Is something new, Counselor Fuller, or can we call the question?
I just have one more thing to say. Is this the first time the Port Theatre has ever waived fees for a fundraising event?
Okay, call a question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next item. Come to my attention, there's two items on the calendar coming up, and they are, on May twenty-fifth, at Government House in Victoria, two of our citizens will be, will be honored by the Governor General. They are Mr. George Anderson and Mr. Don Hubbard. And based on the travel and expense policy, I would have to ask permission to either attend or have a member of council attend.
I would still move that the mayor attend the event at Government House on May twenty-fifth, and take any guest of whom he wishes to accompany him.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. There's, we'll do these, there's a second item. So call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. There's a second one, and that is on, May the, pardon me, I'm sorry, May the nineteenth, at the Coast Bastion Inn, the Conference Board of Canada will be putting on a presentation that's cosponsored by Coastal Community Credit Union, MNP, Vantage BC, Nanaimo Downtown Business Improvement Association, Nanaimo Economic Development Corporation, Vancouver Island Economic Alliance. And it is Western Business Outlook Nanaimo, and it is going from seven-thirty in the morning until noon, of which there's a number of featured speakers, and request that the mayor be permitted to attend.
I would further make a motion if required, but I would like to think that our governance policies aren't that constrictive, I hope, and maybe they are, I hope not, and I appreciate the fact that you brought these forward tonight. I would also like to know if there's opportunity for other members of council to attend this particular event or any other particular events that come before, before us for opportunity. But I might be seeking clarification, if it's required from our city manager, if this is something that we have to do here at this table, or if this is something that just simply is a matter of course and communication and correspondence. And with all due respect, if this is coming from the mayor's office, notifying us of events that are upcoming that we'd like to attend, that we don't have to be bogged down at a council meeting to discuss these types of things? I don't know, and that's why I'm asking, because this is all new for all of us. So I would appreciate an answer to that.
Thank you. Ms. Samra?
I actually went over this, this morning. The second event that you've just done is like a normal invitation that council gets all the time, and the practice is, is that it gets sent on to council for your information, and council members decide if they want to attend the event in town, so it doesn't require any discussion at the council table or any approvals. To go to that type of event, you get those daily. The other event is out-of-town travel, but Victor and I were working on a way that you guys are able to correspond with one another and deal with that outside of a council meeting, so that you're not doing individual calendar items at a council meeting. The other thing that I had recommended this morning at the weekly mayoral briefing was that perhaps a conference call on Monday mornings for council. Each councillor calls in, and it's a ten-minute, fifteen-minute call, and you share the calendar events and the different things that are going on, and have the opportunity to talk to one another about that, as a way of directly communicating about these different things in a timely manner, because sometime with the volume of email that you're getting and all the different invites, because you get a ton of invites all the time, sometimes things get lost. So it was a more proactive way for council members to be communicating with one another. So certainly, I appreciate it was brought to the table this evening, but certainly it can be dealt with outside of a formal council meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Hong?
Thank you. Well, I guess I move that motion first for a discussion. Has it been moved and seconded?
No seconded at this time.
Okay, I seconded for a discussion. I actually wanted to attend that one as well, but I figured I had my thousand-dollar budget, so I wasn't going to ask until I used that up.
Well, excuse me. Both of them have a cost, and I apologize to council for not, for not bringing those costs forward. I estimate the Victoria engagement at about just under two hundred dollars. And this one here, this Western Business Outlook Nanaimo, is also a hundred ninety-nine dollars, registration fee. That's why I ask. Counselor Brennan?
So you have a one thousand dollar allowance, so could you not fit it in there?
Actually, I can't.
Oh, can you tell me about that?
That's because, to date, I have, my current budget is at one thousand four hundred and twenty-three twenty-nine.
I see. Okay, thank you. So in that instance, then, am I, I just reviewing the, the motion that was passed last, last time we met, and that was that anything in excess, I guess, of the thousand dollars would have to be approved. I don't know how you approve things without a motion of council. So, yeah, if there is a way, that would be great, but I didn't, I read this to mean that would have to come to council, too, so.
Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. I'm very comfortable with it coming before us here at council, and we do have a governance policy that's new, in that it is an allocation of funds on an annual basis, and in order to protect and control and be accountable and all of those things, we've implemented that new policy. So I'm quite comfortable to do it here, and that is the way that the policy reads, so I'm fine with that. So I would encourage just to vote.
Thank you. Call a question, and all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And the next item is delegation, it's not related to a report on council. And the first one is Mr. Robert Fuller, and that's regarding council remuneration.
Robert Fuller, thirty-three fifty Hammond Bay Road. Before I start, I'd like to give great thanks to Mrs. Denise Bryce for her help. It's taken countless hours to peruse numerous municipalities, districts, and townships over the province, just to see what's going on in these bylaws. I'm sorry I don't have a copy for everyone. Our printer ran out of ink, but there are two sets of two sets of four there. Each one is a different bylaw from a different district or municipality. The highlighted portion is basically what I'm going to be talking about this evening. I am here this evening to ask council to consider the attachment of a bylaw on the present council, remuneration bylaw or policy, dealing with the subject of absence from council meetings. It is the expectation of the electorate that all members of council attend all meetings, required to engage in matters concerning our city, to learn from these meetings on behalf of citizens, to gather the appropriate information to guide our city, and inherit to these concerns to move city business forward in a productive nature for the betterment of all concerned. When any member of council takes it upon themselves to neglect their duty, it is not only the electors and taxpayers that are robbed of accountability, but the city itself. I, as well as many other citizens, expect accountability and responsibility from those that I have elected to represent my best interests. Therefore inconceivable to myself when any member of council takes it upon themselves to be derelict of their duties to us and shirk their responsibilities of office. The Community Charter, that which guides municipalities, and its counterpart, the Local Government Act, clearly spell out repercussions for those who miss council meetings. That being, in the Community Charter, it is Section 125, Bracket 5, subject to subsection 7, if a council member is absent from council meetings for (a) a period of 60 consecutive days, or (b) four consecutive scheduled council meetings, whichever is the longer period, the council member is disqualified from holding office. And subsection 7 reads, "This would not apply if the absence is because of illness or injury or is with leave of council." And Division 2, Section 204 of the Local Government Act is virtually identical. When run reads both the Community Charter and the Local Government Acts of British Columbia, you can take away from these that quite a bit of leeway is given before a council member or director can be disqualified from office. But without a specific bylaw, an unscrupulous elected official can certainly navigate through this section with virtually little impunity. It is not much of a stretch that a council member could, for example, attend two meetings, miss three, attend one meeting, miss two, and so forth throughout their term in office with little to worry about. This behavior would, of course, be under intense scrutiny, but other than at the ballot box, there would be little in the way of accountability. As such, I would like to ask all of council, in the interest of accountability, responsibility for one's actions, fiscal prudence, to consider enacting a bylaw which would attach to the remuneration policy so that this transgression of councillors' responsibility might carry forth an air of accountability to the electorate. After all, we have the expectation that those we elect are held to the same standards of responsibility as we ourselves are. No more, no less. As a side note, during my research into this matter, I've discovered that this transgression happens rarely, but it does happen. And without a bylaw to administer accountability and fiscal responsibility on a municipality's remuneration policy, it is open to this important practice. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no questions, sir. Motion to receive the delegation. Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Besrick. Call a question, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Next delegation is Mr. Richard Romer and Mr. Rob Christopher on behalf of Nanaimo Search and Rescue regarding lease of land at the Nanaimo Reservoir.
Romer, 5791 Brogway Road.
Rob Christopher, 3061 Nathan Road, Nanaimo.
You might just want to get that up as close as you can. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. My position with Nanaimo Search and Rescue is president. Richard is our building director. Just going to give you a little background on, before Richard speaks to our more specific request. Thirty years ago this year, a family lost their son to the Nanaimo River. That predates Nanaimo Search and Rescue proper, but since that time, this family has been an amazing supporter of Nanaimo Search and Rescue. Their very generous donations over the years have purchased much of our equipment in the past. Before my time, we would approach them, they would ask us for a list of what we needed as far as the gear and equipment, and they'd inevitably purchase it for us. The two new vehicles that you may have seen in the news were from funds that they had originally earmarked for us for a building, but of course, with the price of real estate and real buildings, the $100,000 wasn't able to be used for that, but we were able to repurpose it and buy these two rescue trucks, right down to the yellow jacket some of our members are wearing today. So they've been just amazing supporters. While all these donations over the years have been in memory of their son, they would like to do something a little more permanent, much more permanent, to honor him. And they came to me with an idea earlier this year, then in there would be to honor their son and to raise awareness of the value that search and rescue provides. And their hope was that they could help us build a permanent home for Nanaimo Search and Rescue. And they have pledged us $1 million to that. So after the sort of shock wore off during this, you know, this news, we started to go to work on the logistics and quickly realized that although a million dollars is a lot of money, we could not purchase, build a building that would suit our current needs and our future needs as well as acquire land. It was clear at that point that we needed a partner in this endeavor if their wishes were to come to fruition. So with that, I'll turn it over to Richard, and he'll explain a little bit more about what we're specifically looking at.
I would like to walk you through a little bit of what Nanaimo Search and Rescue actually entails, a little bit about our building requirements and constraints, and the proposed new building location. BC Search and Rescue Program is a professional, but also volunteer-driven organization, so we're basically all volunteers. We dedicate our time, we take time off work to search for people. So we're not like, for instance, the fire department that gets some money when they go out. We don't get any money. It's divided in air, marine, and ground search and rescue. We have 84 groups in BC with over 2,500 volunteers in ground search and rescue, and Nanaimo Search and Rescue is part of that. The role of search and rescue is that we get most calls through an emergency center in Victoria, but most calls come from the RCMP. For instance, we had a lost lady at Westwood Lake that we searched for that came through the RCMP. Sometimes we also get a call out from the ambulance. That was last Friday when a mountain biker fell on the trails in Dumont. The ambulance can only go that far, we have to go in with a stretcher and carry them out. Sometimes we also have to do work for the coroner, I'll leave it at that. And very rarely, we also support the coast guard in doing shoreline searches in the marine surrounding. So I just made a kind of overview from the last five years, how busy we were. We have about 25 incidents per year where we go out, but this can go like for months with almost nothing, and then suddenly it can spike. Last month, we were the busiest group in BC, so busier than North Shore, which is always in the news, but we were the busiest one, actually. We also do training exercises. Every week, we train on Tuesday evenings, but we also have other trainings like specific, for instance, swift water training, rope rescue, and all that kind of specific training. And we also participate in about 40 events per year. That could be, for instance, the Christmas parade, but also fundraising and internal meetings. So on those five years, we had about an average of 43 members per year, and they put in about 121 hours per year per member. And we also have some auxiliary members. So an overview, we actually recruited a few more people now, so we are now a society of 50 to 60 volunteers, and we see over the years a growing amount of members with a growing amount of hours per member. And this also puts a little bit more pressure on our building and our equipment. So again, we're totally dependent on grants, donations, charity, and fundraising, so we're a completely volunteer organization. So besides all the training and all the time we have to go out, we also have to do a lot of fundraising. So our current building is located at the Old Harwood Fire Hall between Bruce Avenue and Ford Street. This is how it looks. We basically use the ground floor and the two bays that you see over there, and the first floor is actually the activity center, which we don't use at all. We have a limited amount of internal space. You can see that the storage for vehicles and equipment is pretty tight, like here's the ATV, and our boat is basically stored on top of it, so it's pretty tough to deploy. The command bus is next to the truck, and if we have to park the other truck at the ground floor, we actually have to collapse the mirrors to park it into this bay, so it's a pretty tight spot. Besides that, we also have a very limited amount of office space. We need more and more paperwork to do for all kinds of stuff, and it's quite tight. And especially when we have training and incidents going on, we have a lack of parking space. So we considered a few options here, and we looked at renovating this current building, this old fire hall. We would still end up with a limited amount of space. We know that we have to do a seismic upgrade of about $300,000, and there's still a presence of hazardous materials in this building, so we still have to deal with that as well. So we sat down in a preliminary meeting with the city, and we asked, like, what kind of land could be available for something like a new building for search and rescue? So we sat down with Richard Harding, Bill Corson, Karen Lindsay, and Craig Richardson, and they came with a few options to consider. Then we went back in an internal meeting, and we did a kind of option evaluation. We looked at, like, okay, renovating the old building or going for a new piece of land. And after weighing all these pros and cons, we found out that a new location would be a preferred option for us. We again checked the several options that we had, and for us, the Nanaimo Reservoir site is the most favorable site. It's close to our work area, I don't like to call it that way, but we get a lot of callouts to Mount Benson, to the Abyss, to the Nanaimo Lakes Road, like the Nanaimo Lakes itself. There's a lot of really neat training grounds around that area for rope rescues, for swift water. It's easily accessible for us, for our members, central location in Nanaimo, so really great for us. Just a little bit of an overview where it is, Old Island Highway, Nanaimo Lakes Road, you can see the reservoir is still spouting out water over there, and Morel Sanctuary Development over there, so a little bit of a close-up. It's basically green space. I think the city only mows it, for over 30 years, this is not developed. They only mow the grass, I heard. So what does it look like on the ground floor? This is basically it. It's an open kind of space, ideal for us. Here you look at the Nanaimo Lakes Road, and this is a view from the road to that area. So our request for the council is to partner with Search and Rescue to provide a permanent home that will best serve the citizens of Nanaimo and the regional district, and lease this land to Nanaimo Search and Rescue. Thank you for your time.
Counsel, any questions or comments for the delegation? Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. Just briefly, I just want to thank you very much for your patience and for such a very good report with all the information that you have for us. It's great to have. And just again, thank you very much for your patience, more than anything. Thank you.
Counselor Fuller?
I want to thank you for your report as well. Is it possible to bring up the map of where the reservoir is again? I'm trying to. Are we looking at the old reservoir or the new reservoir?
So I think it's what we call now the old reservoir.
Okay, now I. I should have looked up. Because I can see the buildings there that are on it.
Yeah, so you see the little red kind of rectangular shape there?
Yeah.
It's not very clear. Done a better job, yeah.
Oh, that piece? Okay.
Hey, detail.
Yeah, and there are some cliffs right in that area, too. I know. Thanks, thanks. So if we lease you the property, how are you going to get a building built? Because you said right off the get-go that a million bucks don't build much of a building.
No, I meant the, maybe I wasn't clear. A million dollars wouldn't be enough to build the building that we need going forward and purchase land.
Okay.
But we believe, and we've done some preliminary investigation, we can build a building that would not only meet our needs now and in the future, but would also suit that land space and be an asset to the city as well.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Kip?
Again, thank you very much for the work you guys do, the volunteer work, the Korean lady that walked for hours to the other end of town almost, and those type of things. It's phenomenal what you do, and you do it on your own time, you all invest in your own money. I'm glad to see the province and the feds are kicking more into insurances and things like that. I think this is a great idea, a long time coming. The other buildings were offered a long time ago, possibly, those ones there, I call Possum Lodge now, but you went to Harwood Fire Hall, which I didn't think was a premium location at that time either.
We don't want to sound ungrateful. I mean, I'm the one that used to have to scrape the snow off the top of the bus when it was at our search manager's backyard.
Oh, Carol's.
Before we moved to the Harwood Fire Hall, so, you know, and we could continue to make that work. I don't think many groups have an opportunity to have a donor or donation of this size to be able to, you know, work with their communities, to have a permanent location, really.
Well, from my perspective, the building is an old asset that you're in now, needs work. The city is probably easier to utilize that as something in the future, or get rid of that, and easier to market. So I appreciate it. But I will say now, what we'll have to do is move this back to staff to get a report on it and move it to and find out where we go. So I'd make a motion to, if anybody else is not, there's more people speaking?
There's two more.
Okay. But thanks again for the work you do.
Counselor Pratt?
So a couple of questions, but first of all, I would just like to also add my thanks, my gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Nanaimo for all the amazing work that you You do it as a volunteer, and it's pretty amazing that you put your lives at risk in many, many situations to support the community. So thank you very, very much for that. I think this is a great idea. I'm assuming you're wanting a nominal lease on this. And I'm wondering, do you pay any rent right now where you are, or is that?
The way it's set up right now, the RDN pays $2,000 a month through the city for the.
Okay, so you get it through a grant? Yeah, good. Thank you.
RDN pays the city rent.
It's not a grant. The RDN pays, because it's a regional search group, the RDN pays the city $2,000 a month to rent that building. So it's not.
To cover their rent.
We pay it as the RDN.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Besrick?
Thank you. Just wish.
Just wish to ask, is there any time sensitivity? I'm certain that there is. You would probably like to undertake the commencement of building as soon as possible. Is that?
I'm glad you brought that up. I certainly didn't really make that clear at the beginning, but my opening with the thirty-year anniversary of the death of this family's son would be a great time. That would be in 2016 to at least have something in motion that we could work on and leverage as a, you know, it's really feel-good kind of story, and that thirty-year anniversary would be innate of that, I think. So other than that, you know, we are functioning well out of the hall we have now. Our base, I think we've been pretty successful from there. So from a, you know, safety of our, you know, constituency, that's not a concern, but, you know, sooner the better, I guess. And then these things take time, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you, S. Juanua. Thank you for your presentation, and also don't know the family donated a million dollars, but wow, that's amazing. And all your volunteers behind you, know a couple of them, do great work, and look forward to wherever I can be to support. Thank you.
No others questions? I have a couple for you. Have you had any discussions with our development services department concerning this project?
None beyond what you're what we referenced to in the.
Yeah, I'm just trying to I'm just trying to search out whether or not there's been any discussions about relaxation of works and services. You know, by the fact that there's a building going up there, there's going to be other things like, you know, curb gutter sidewalk requirements, these sorts of things.
We didn't really want to go ahead of ourselves and ahead of council as well. We started a preliminary meeting to find out different options, and we'd take it one step at a time. We don't want to be ahead of, like, bringing all kind of designs and all these kind of things, so.
Thank you very much.
We didn't want to be too presumptuous.
Okay. I see. Thank you very much. I see no other questions. Motion to receive the delegation, please.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Brennan and seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All those in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Counselor Kip.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we forward their request to count to staff for further review on the options available to the city on moving with this project, a report on it.
Can we also ask that staff look at some of those other issues, other than any other?
All development issues.
All development issues with respect to this?
Yeah.
Because I don't think we've even gone that far ahead. Great, thank you. So motion, seconded. Counselor Pratt, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if we were going to do all of the delegations and then make motions at the end, so is it if item A is gone, can I bring back a motion?
What I was planning on doing was at the end of the at the end of all the presentations, Counselor Kip just jumped the gun on this one, but on the end of all the delegations, any business arising from the delegations.
Kip.
Great, thank you. The next delegation is Mr. Holdham Southward regarding Nanaimo's cultural heritage.
Thank you very much. This subject actually has a lot to it.
We've got your name, sir, but no, we need your address for the record.
My name is Holden Southward, and the subject of cultural heritage.
The address?
Yep.
Address.
Eight-four-eight Ina's Place.
Thank you.
Try to be try to be secret, but I guess not. Anyway, so anyway, the importance of in, you know, preserving Nanaimo's cultural heritage, you know, can't be overstated because whether it be something like a recognized holiday like Christmas, which is also Christian pagan or whatever like this, has the same has familiar common denominators for everyone, where it's a linkage to family, it strengthens family, or other activities. And that would be for the city, too. And then unfortunately, like, you know, you have, like, you know, the schools, they'll change it to winter break. You know, most people never had a problem with it, but it's more of a mind game where it's being controlled by just a few. As soon as as soon as you start subtly erasing the memory of those holidays that link families together, then you then the next generation grows up without a significance of it, especially when they come up, when they are raised in broken homes, and they just don't really have that common experience. Common experience with everybody is so important because it unites us, whether it be the Empire Day Parade, that was unfortunate, we lost something. I mean, I never had anything to do with it, I just saw that was unfortunate, just the way that whole thing went. It went, because we shouldn't judge the traditions of the past so harshly, but instead grasp the purity to which the authors were trying to capture. And because the linkage to the past is so important for our understanding of ourselves, as I had said, you know, before, understanding of yourself and as a human and our best self can only be done with a connection to the past traditions and through the wisdom of living passed down through the ancestors to our family. So it's just something to keep in mind, but there is a globalist plot to deconstruct our societies bit by bit by taking away our ownership and our authority, like through the TPP and all these trade organizations. And what I'm going to do is I'm just going to read off John F. Kennedy's speech. It was audio recorded in nineteen sixty-one, April twenty-seventh. It's well-known, it's not a hoax, and he's warning the American people. Okay. "The very word secrecy is repugnant in a free and open society, and we are a people inherently historically opposed to secret societies, secret oaths, and to secret proceedings. For we are opposed around the world by a monolithic and ruthless conspiracy that relies primarily on covert means for expanding its sphere of influence, on infiltration instead of invasion, on subversion instead of election, on intimidation instead of free choice. It is a system that has conscripted vast human and material resources into the building of a tightly knit, highly efficient machine that combines military, diplomatic, intelligence, economics, scientific, and political operations. Its preparations are concealed, not published. Its mistakes are buried, not headlined. Its dissenters are silenced, not praised. No expenditure is questioned, no secret is revealed. That is why the Athenian lawmaker Solon decreed it a crime that any citizen should shrink from controversy. I am asking your help for alerting the tremendous task of informing and alerting the American people. Confident with your help, man was born what he was born to be: free and independent." So this is just one, but we also have some a Canadian on our side, too, a longtime politician named Paul Hellier, a longtime Canadian politician who also served as Minister of Defense for Lester B. Pearson. And he is an anti-globalist. He has warned Canadians about the New World Cabal that includes members of the Council of Foreign Relations, oil companies, big corporations, the Bilderberg's, world banks, armed forces, and intelligence agencies. This cabal, he warns, wants to create a one-world dictatorship with total financial and military control. At the top of the pyramid of this New World Order cabal is the banker families that own and control the major five major world banks, like the AMF, and they are all connected and players are from longtime descendants from the first original big bank beginnings. Two hundred years ago, Rothschild, the owner of the Bank of England, boasted, "He whom controls the money supply of a nation controls a nation, and I control the money supply." England was not just a nation, it was an empire. And though the colonial nations have long ago became independent from a figurehead they call a king or queen, the true influence of the tag-team partners of the big business and the big bankers never left. Their effects, their domination, are all throughout the world, and their latest scheme is to turn the last independent nations like Russia, China, or Syria into beggar states looking for a loan from the world banks. The loan they receive is worthless, fiat money, but rather but their submission to it gives credence to the beginning of a one-world currency. He who controls the currency of the world controls the world." This is the biggest reason why a third world war is growing, the possibility of it. After World War II, America's dollar was given the was given the reserve currency status, you know, to which all currencies were pegged to. At first, the American dollar was backed by gold, and the price of gold was fixed at thirty-five dollars per ounce. After nineteen seventy-one, Nixon removed the American dollar from the gold standard, and that is when inflation became predominant. This call for the removal of the American dollar off the gold standard was no doubt the big bankers' plan, because they knew society in the Western nations was beginning to decay with engineering, and only debt dysfunction and hyperinflation would follow, most nations leading to a move to a one-world currency. The societal decay, which leads us to more debt and dysfunction, is subtle at first, but its manifestation becomes more profound over a few generations and even a few years. The globalist plan is to destroy us from within, and they have now a huge influence in the educational system, Hollywood, the music industry, advertisements, and government. They have long known what Adolf Hitler said, "Only he whom owns the youth gains the future," and they have been hard at it for a long time. Globalist's main intent is to break societies down to a non-distant, amorphous, dependent, gender-neutral, in-debt, divided people, and angry competition with each other. They want to destroy the traditional family sanctity of life and the significance of father and mother. They want to destroy gender role because this is the foundation of the fabric of society that unites men and women as counterparts, not competitors. They're destroying romanticism. When a man plays the role as a main protector, provider, and representative, this gives the woman the grace to play the role of the heart and nurture, the divine stay-home mum, the foundation of society. That's, you know. Aaron Russo, a well-known filmmaker who ran for governor, was approached and befriended by one of the Rockefeller bankers and was courted by him to be one of the members of the secret societies. Aaron did not comply, though, and later on, after coming down with terminal cancer, confessed in an interview, he was told he said he was told by the Rockefeller, they have a plan for a one-world government and total domination. Also, he was told the Rockefeller has financed much of the feminist movement in order to destabilize society. Before, women did not pay taxes, consume much, and were the foundation of a stable family. The globalist plan, he was told, was to take the influence of the family was to take the influence of the family traditions away from the children so that the state could eventually reprogram them for their means. Any traditions that unite us with family, community, or our past are under assault, and this is why Christmas in our schools has been labeled as winter holidays. This is why there is no more Empire Days Parade. The poison of distorted political correctness applied by a few too often goes against the majority. This is a strategy that is about applying misguided guilt and judgment repeatedly in order to take authority over someone else's moral compass and break down their will. The New World Order wants to create a unipolar view across the globe and then dissolve borders and our freedom. So it's a lot to digest. I mean, that's why I believe in living like the Amish, being that's why I talk about things like we should become a semi-autonomous municipality within Canada, totally self-owned. So.
Thank you, sir.
It's so it's a it's a long subject, but, you know, men and women are to be equally valued, but in nature, what unites us is that we're counterparts, and it makes it beautiful and romantic. But as soon as money came in, as soon as as soon as land ownership and putting everybody into debt, it puts everybody in competition, now we're at odds, where in the natural order, it's not about forcing.
Thank you, sir.
Then.
Thank you. Motion to receive the delegation.
So moved.
So moved, and seconded by Counselor Hong. Thank you. Call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Rick Myers.
I'm Rick Myers, and I live at twenty-eight-fifty Riverbend Road. I'm the president of Nanaimo Pride, and this is Mark O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Mark O'Neill. I'm at five-six-zero Pithian Lane.
Never mind getting the pronunciation wrong.
Adam O'Briens on the brain.
Carlos O'Briens. So I'm not only the president of Pride, but I'm really a big active guy in the LGBTQ community, born and raised in Nanaimo. Unfortunately, last year, we lost our president of Pride. We used to be called Vera or Viara, Vancouver, Rainbridge Association, and unfortunately, we lost John Lee last year. So I stepped up and became the president, and I think I've talked to most of you, and some of you I've only emailed. This year, we wanted to take Pride and make it a lot bigger. We wanted to be way more inclusive, and we wanted to do some of the traditional things like the flag raising, except we want to do the flag raising way bigger. We've been able to, like, round up lots of money, not lots, we're able to round up some money, but this year, we want to have the first Pride Parade ever. And we've got applications in, we're doing all that kind of stuff. But what I'm here to seek from you guys is I'd like to see if we can do what they call the Pride Walk. They've done it in Prince George, Victoria, Vancouver, and it's painting crosswalks rainbow. And so I'm here to seek if you guys will help us do that. Also, I'm here to see if maybe you could help us, because we, like I said, we have some money. We don't have a lot of money, and we're putting on the first parade ever and the first festival. So I'd like to know if maybe you could help by waiving some of the fees that we have. I mean, next year, we'll have momentum and things will be going good, and we'll be a lot more self-sufficient. And, well, if you've got any other money kicking around, I'd really appreciate it.
That's it?
Somewhere over the rainbow, yeah. Oh, I think that's it. Let me look. I didn't even look at my notes. Oh, yeah, he can add some stuff.
All right, appreciate it. So this is actually an extension of an event that's been going on for nineteen years. This is the first time that it's become a citywide event. It's going to be all-inclusive for everybody, running from June eighth to twelfth. We'll be running at seven full events, doing a flag raising, there's going to be dance and adult dance, there's going to be a pet parade, which is going to be a fun event for everyone. It'll be culminated on the twelfth with a parade and festival down at Mafia Sutton Park. We've already partnered with the Kinsmen Association, they're going to be doing a beer gardens for us, and they've actually managed to handle the security. We're currently working with Pride Vancouver, Pride Victoria to bus in people, to get people in. Already we reached out to some of the major carriers, so Harbor Air, Helijet, and as well B.C. ferries. We're contacting them to try to get people coming in from other cities to make this a major tourist event. This is the first year of many, and we would like your support going forward so that we can make this an event that's becoming of the city.
Thank you.
See, I'm just fabulous, and he's really smart.
Thank you. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and definitely pleased to be a part of a city that supports initiative. I believe it's the right thing to do, just thing to do, and but also it's also great for the city, it'd be a good economic driver as well. And but regarding to the crosswalks, two questions. Where did you have in mind for the crosswalks? And secondly, yeah, we'll get to that one first, if I may, and then I'll get my next question.
Well, one of the good spots, of course, is by the by Flying Fish right there, Flying Fish Royal Bank. It's there's four there. They're smaller than what some of the traditional crosswalks are that I've been sort of pricing out that other cities have done.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just over in the mainland on the weekend, and I noticed some Pride sidewalks that were permanent fixtures. Would this be permanent, or would it be for just the festival for those days?
From what I've gathered from Prince George and Victoria, those are permanent, whereas in every, I think it's three or four years, they have to be repainted. The permanent ones, I think you might have saw, were on Davie Street. Yeah. Where they dug up the asphalt and put down rainbow-colored rubber.
Okay. And my second question would be, you mentioned some costs. What costs, like, I don't know what costs are to host an event, talking about licensing or something?
Yeah, I think we've got some fees for the parade and the festival and the dog parade. There's a fee for having a dog parade or a pet parade, too. They're just permits and stuff for about, I don't know, a couple hundred bucks. The sidewalks or the crosswalks that we've priced out, Victoria did theirs for fourteen thousand dollars, and that's they got four of them right down by City Hall, and I think Prince George's was six thousand dollars. The good thing is you don't have to do them all the time. I think the color rainbow lasts.
Okay, so, um, actually, my bad, three questions. And is this, is inaugural parade in Nanaimo?
It's going to be, this is our first year. Like, um, Mark said, we've been having Pride for nineteen years now, just a lot of people haven't really noticed. Um, this year, we want it to be really inclusive so that people do notice. Next year will be our twentieth, and this is our stepping stone this year. We're, um, dancing as fast as we can, but I, I think we're going to pull it off. And so far, the support from the community's been amazing. The first thing I always hear when I say we're going to have a parade or we're going to have Pride is, um, I hear "finally."
So, okay, so I'd just like to, I look forward, I'm definitely in support of the whole initiative. I remember numerous years ago, it was ten, twelve, or fourteen years ago, when City Nanaimo wouldn't support the parade or the initiative, and I was really ashamed and embarrassed wherever then, but I look forward to be, uh, I'm definitely in support and look forward to the activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hong.
Um, thank you. So you mentioned, you wanted, I think, two crosswalks, so you mentioned the one, so you want all four painted, or just one of them on Commercial Street or front, or all four in the entire corner?
All four would be really nice, one would be kind of like lopsided. Um, but there's also, there's also one that I really like, but no one ever sees, and that's right in front of City Council, I mean, right in front of City Hall, there's a big one there.
Okay, so...
But that big one there is probably about the same footage as the square would be at, um, by Flying Fish.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councillor Bestwick.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think you'll find support for your initiatives from this council. I just wondered if you, I think you would qualify with the Nanaimo Hotel Association as it relates to bringing in guests and visitors and more heads in beds kind of thing. It's one of their criterias, and it's one of their initiatives to support events and activities and attractions and tourism and so on and so forth. So I'd strongly encourage you, um, to reach out to that organization, uh, as well, um, for assistance, and I'd look forward to hearing back from staff on whatever other assistance. There may be requests coming forward from it. It's a little bit, uh, in general terms, saying, you know, if you've got any money kicking around, it'd be great, but, so if you could be a little bit more specific, that would even be, whoop, I'm sorry, that would even be better, but I would try the hotel association also.
Councillor Fuller.
I'm curious as to whether the crosswalk between Commercial Street and Esplanade that crosses Terminal Avenue just past the China Steps would be one that you'd think of, and whether the city would be able to do that one, or whether it'd be provincial, because that would get all the traffic coming in and...
I think that when we looked at it, we looked at Victoria and stuff, that they went with, um, with roads that they were in charge of, like, so if we cross the Island Highway, that's, um, a government?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's too bad. Maybe, uh, late at night and when there's red lights at the crosswalks, and people might just appear and paint it.
Councillor Brennan.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, Rick, what is the parade route?
Right now, the application that we have in is from catwalk, so we're not going to cross the highway, um, because we're going to probably have a smaller parade than, than normal. Well, it seems to be growing, though.
Right.
Um, and come up and then finish at Maffeo Sutton Park, but if it's not too late with the engineering department, it'd be really awesome if we could muster and assemble up by the police station and come down Fitzwilliam. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm born and raised in Nanaimo, and, and that's a really beautiful part of town that we sometimes forget we have, and it'd be nice to go there and then cross over the bridge and then go by our crosswalk and turn and then go that way.
Okay, because I was, I was wondering about the crosswalk at, um, the vault and that corner, the old Eaton's.
That's a really big, long one.
Is it?
Yeah.
Too big, huh? Oh.
And you've got lots of nice bricks there now.
Who knows? We, we probably should get a report on this. When do, when do you need some answers by in terms of your, um, of your financial planning?
Well, right now, like, like Mark said, we, we're doing okay. Um, we had a big, um, cost with the wave radio station, so we dipped into our funds quite a bit, uh, but I think right now with the coffers, and we might have to do another fundraiser, which we can do, probably at the Queen's, um, but yeah, and then I think we'll be able to keep moving forward.
All right. So if we asked for a staff report on, on, um, the feasibility of, of doing the sidewalks and what it would cost if we were waiving fees, that kind of thing, like a whole report on the whole, the whole campaign sort of, you've got time for that?
We've got time. Maybe it'd be sure nice to have the crosswalks painted before, um, June the twelfth.
Yes, I get that, that's a short time span, Rick. Anyway, at, uh, any rate, when the questions are finished, I'll ask for a report and ask for it to come back as, as soon as possible, you know, recognizing the urgency.
Councillor Kip.
Um, no, Rick, I support what you're doing. It's going to help Nanaimo. It's an interesting time for it, things are changing. As far as the crosswalk marketing go, we need a new crosswalk that goes from the old Pirates Fish and Chips across to the burnt building. Probably remove the one at the highway, because that's really dangerous, people come off the highways up around the corner, and put the new sidewalk over from the old Pirates Fish and Chips to the burnt building or towards China Steps somewhere there, because a lot of people come through that area, and that'd be a neat one, because it'd be right in that major intersection there, it'd be neat, too. But I support it, um, but we do need to send it back to staff for a motion. Thanks for coming forward.
Councillor Pratt.
No, no, that's all, am I?
Thank you to both of you for your presentation. I definitely support the initiative, and, uh, Rick, I'm sorry that we haven't been able to get together. Things have been a little bit hectic, but, um, I appreciate your efforts in this regard, and I appreciate you getting in touch with me, um, and I would be happy to meet with you. This is a really interesting project, and it will be interesting to see what the staff come back with on this, so thank you for your presentation and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Motion to receive the delegation.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Brennan, seconded by councillor Yocum. Discussion seeing none, call the question halls. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Councillor Brennan.
Um, I would move that, um, we refer, uh, the issue of the, um, of Pride Week to staff for a report on, um, the sidewalk, no, it's not sidewalks, crosswalks, crosswalks and any other, um, financial assistance that we can provide.
Seconded. Seconded by councillor Hong. Thank you. Any discussion? Call the question halls. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. It's going to take some yeoman work to get something done in any length of time. This is pretty late, it's June, uh, eighth.
Meeting meets tomorrow, and so we'll have a discussion with them. It's interesting, my husband and I, we're down in Victoria, and we walked across the crosswalks that they have down there, and my husband said, "Nanaimo should have a Pride parade," so, be surprised to hear that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, then. Call the question?
We did.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Next one. Last but not least, uh, is it Mr. McMahon?
Dennis McMahon, five-four-seven-one Leslie Crescent. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Harbour City Photography Club, and, uh, for the first time in five years, we found a venue to hold our photo salon, and it's going to be held at the Vancouver Island University Art Gallery. And so the only reason I'm here tonight is to inform you of that and to invite you or a member of council to officially open the event for us. The opening will be at, on May twenty-seventh at seven P M. And if somebody is able to make it, if they could arrive maybe half an hour early, we could give them a show of the exhibition and explain the work that goes into taking those images, as well as processing them in the, uh, into the software. The Vancouver Island is inviting Shaw Television to come down and, uh, do the event also.
Thank you very much. Councillor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. McMahon. Thank you for coming, thank you for your patience, waiting through the rest of the meeting, but we appreciate, uh, hearing from you in person and getting that information, and I for one can't promise, but I'll certainly attempt to attend on the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Kip.
Harbour City Photography Club on Shaw Cable is excellent. They do a great job, it's great photography, it's nice to watch and just sit there and have those images go through, even Gary Corpens.
Thank you. All right.
I had to get that shot on Gary.
Thank you. Councillor Bestwick.
Thank you. Um, just thank you for your introduction to the event. I would encourage that we put that into our calendar, um, our, from, through staff to Mayor and council for the May twenty-seventh event. Thank you.
Councillor Hong.
Um, thank you. I would have liked to have come, I love photography, but I'm on a ferry on that day. But I just wanted to ask a question. These aren't photoshopped photos, right? These are actual, these are going to be actual pictures that people have taken with a camera and, and not photoshopped, right?
Every, every photograph is, camera will do its work within the camera, and, but then almost every one of them will have some element of editing added to it, so that it becomes, you know, there's an argument as to whether photography is an art or not, but by, uh, enhancing the images, uh, then it becomes art, and it makes it your own personal interpretation.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Mr. McMahon, before you... Are you on there?
No, your, councillor Pratt is next.
Yeah. Yeah, don't run away. Um, how many photographers are participating in this?
Uh, we have approximately a hundred, um, members now in the club. There'll be, I think it's eighty-six actual images on display, and it's a juried exhibition, so, um, you know, it, they should be, uh, good, high-quality photos.
I'm very much looking forward to that. Thank you for coming to us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thorpe. Don't run away.
Sounds very cool. I mean, I'm, if I can make it up there, I'm going to give it a shot. Uh, what do you think of the cameras on phones nowadays? They're getting pretty good.
They are. In fact, some professional photographers specialize in using iPhone and the, the apps that come with that phone. It's absolutely amazing.
Well, I actually find the Android better than the iPhone, but hey, that's my personal opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you. Motion received by councillor Hong, seconded by councillor Bestwick. Uh, seeing no questions, call the, call the question halls. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, before we move on to question period, as I suggested earlier, any, uh, any business arising from the delegations? Councillor Bestwick.
Thank you. Relative to twelve A, I would so move council direct staff to return with a report on the topic of council remuneration and attendance and other matters as it relates. If it, if you need a notice of motion, fine. If you require a secondary and a recent one, that'll tell you that the notice of motion won't fly in, in two weeks either.
All right, is there a secondary? Seconded by councillor Kip. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question halls. In favor? Opposed? Councillor Brennan opposed. Thank you. Uh, motion carries. So, next item, question period.
Kevin Story, twenty-five sixty-two Ross Town Road. Good to be back again. Refreshing to see Mr. McKay here, and I actually enjoyed your input tonight, Mr. McKay. I'd like to talk and ask a few questions, first of all, about the intersection, uh, Northfield and Island Highway. Gradually, council, having a second look at this, but I have a number of questions. I wonder, can we get the diagram of the proposed project back up on the screen? Thank you. So my first question, as I was listening to the discourse about this and the discussion about the need for rail or what's going to happen to the railway, when, and this might, through the chairman, go to staff, when this was under consideration and the design was done, did anybody take into account that in twenty years, our community will probably twice, be twice the size it is now, and we'll have a need for light rail transit? And that, uh, that may be, uh, within the community or from here to Nanaimo, here to Parksville, here to Port Alberti? Was that, I, so I have that question, because my questions are based around common sense here tonight. So, to me, it makes sense, as a council in future planning and through our planning department, we need to be looking down the road twenty years, not next year or the year after. Rail traffic is a major item, and the way things are going and the way transportation is going, public transit, light rapid, uh, rail, uh, will be a thing in twenty years. So we really need to take that into account. Now, getting back to the project as it's designed itself, I mean, once again, I talked to a lot of taxpayers in the last few days about this project. Once again, it's hopelessly overdesigned, and it's, you know, it's incredibly expensive. Uh, you know, and a lot of people have said, "Look, just install no left turns in every direction, coming off of Northfield onto the highway, coming off of the bottom road, no left turns onto Northfield." And, uh, you know, as Alderman, or Alderman, as councillor Kip stated, and I agree with him, have a designated right turn off of the highway that extends up Northfield so that people can merge onto Northfield, give them some room, and then you won't have the crush of traffic that you get once you instantly turn there. Then also turning right off of Northfield onto the highway, major concern with that one, because the traffic is, you know, everybody's looking behind them, and you end up with four fender benders a day. Extend the merge lane down the road so that people can do a proper thing. And I mean, these don't cost as much money as spending three-point-one million, you know? Nanaimo is becoming famous for building concrete edifices, you know, monuments to spending money. It's like twelve million dollars for the ditch.
I wonder if we can get staff to answer your original question.
Well, I've, I've put it through because I'm not expecting an answer now, Mr. McKay. What I'm expecting is that staff will consider that in the future. So if, you know, our planners can consider light rail, if they can have a look at taking out all of the left-hand turns, installing a right-hand lane, installing a merge lane, uh, you know, these, I don't need answers for that now, but the question is, have these been considered? And obviously, they haven't been considered in this design.
Maybe we can ask staff to answer your question.
Sure, well, maybe we can say, "Why haven't they?" I mean, it's not...
Mr. Lindsay.
I don't expect an answer to that question tonight.
Yeah, I, I think on the second question, in terms of the design and the input, I think we'll, we'll take that back and I'll let engineering staff, uh, speak to that. They were certainly involved in multiple considerations when coming up with this ultimate design. But I will speak to the, the corridor and the long-term preservation of the corridor, because that is certainly entrenched in council's policy documents, and council, a number of years ago, took the step, um, of actually zoning the corridor to ensure its long-term, uh, protection. So that was done, I, I think, about five or six years ago. So certainly, the, the corridor, uh, the secondary discussion is what occurs in the corridor, but the protection of that corridor for future needs has been identified, yes.
So, so, sir, I, I would, I would recommend that what you do is, is send council, mayor and council, an email correspondence with some of your ideas, unless you have further questions.
I'm not on this specific project, but I do have a couple of questions and comments regarding the, um, spending on the, uh... and comments regarding the spending on the, the spending for the senior citizens and how that was brought forward. First of all, I am a senior citizen. So I am aware of some of the, the things that go on with senior citizens. Again, my question this time is to council as a whole. It's an overall question. I've been watching council for the last year and a half since everybody here was elected. And it amazes me at times how many times council is unaware of what's being brought forward by staff. This was a classic example. Councillor Fuller brought it to the attention of council. Seriously, I have to ask, is there no consultation between council and staff while this type of work is ongoing? So that council is not surprised at the last minute by what happened tonight? I mean, I fully support what's done, and I fully support Mr. Horn's work. Surely, to goodness, somebody on council should be aware of what staff is doing. I mean, who's actually pulling the strings? Who's running the city? City council running the city? Or is the staff running the city and city council simply rubber stamping? It's a very good question. A lot of people want to know. Spending is at hand?
Councillor Kip.
I wanted just to address two of your questions. In nineteen eighty-six, thirty years ago, we had a transportation expo in Vancouver. Phenomenal. Went there myself, took my babies there. It was, TransLink was formed out of that. There's three million people in Vancouver, and they can't make TransLink pay. The train line runs from Victoria to Courtney. It doesn't even come close to covering Port McNeil, Port Hardy, Port Alberni, Tofino, Yuculut, Suk. This dream that every democracy has a train running is really starting to bug me. If you think that three million people in Vancouver are paying through the nose for TransLink for their light rail, and if you think in twenty years we can have it, I won't be here, probably. I'll be eighty-five. I won't be taking a train. I'll be on my walker. But we've got to think of this, that that system might not just work on this little island of ours. Works in Holland with eighteen million people. But we've got to get, like, the Victoria guys here at ABICC said, "It'll take thousands of people off the Malahad every day." Bullshit. It won't. It'll cost us millions to fix it right now. There's estimates of a hundred million to fix between Victoria and Courtney. But what's the rest of the island going to get for the hundred million? So the dream of the railway, I loved it. I lived in Europe, lived in Germany, lived in the States where some of it worked. But I'm really tiring that this is this dream of ours. And so for me, it's an old solution that we're going to have this light rail dream. It just doesn't cut it for me. And as far as this social planning stuff, two thousand and four, we had a study, Social Development Strategy for the City of Anamal. Two thousand and eleven, we got an update on that after a number of years. And it talks about the strategies that Mr. Horn is implementing all the time. So does everybody here know of all these strategies? Or does their mind remember? Do they have an eidetic memory that can take and pick these things? No, they don't. But when it comes forward, like, staff is trying to move an initiative where we're getting money. I don't think many people that even questioned this study today actually read what was in the report, that it came from free government money or tax money. I'm not certain they did. But it's good that it arrives at the table. What I like at the RDN is the committee of the whole. All the stuff comes forward, we have a less formal discussion. And then two weeks later, that information arrives at the table again usually, with some updated information. So there is different models of governance that we can use. And I'd like to get to them. But as far as the train for now, I'm falling off the train bandwagon very fast, because it doesn't serve a whole island. And that's why I think when people keep coming up with this train, this train, the train, every intersection, we're paying them millions of dollars over the last years to run a train that ain't existing. And six hundred train cars a year of propane go by my house. Six hundred train cars go that way, and empty ones go by that way. Nitrogen cars run to Dunkin', full of nitrogen, growing products. Huge stuff. We don't have any ability to deal with those type of things. So the train for me and the social planning stuff, it's stuff I understand, stuff I'm just, I can't believe we spent so much time on that tonight. It's been such a big problem for people to get a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from the federal government, finally getting some money in Anamal. So I, I'm, I'm lost. It's like, it's like we're bringing up problems.
Well, you're catching me at a disadvantage, Councillor Kip, because you've actually asked me to debate, and I'm not permitted to debate here.
No, I'm just telling you what I think. No debate.
So my question would be, I don't have a crystal ball as to what society is going to look like in twenty years, do you?
Yeah, I do.
Are we all going to get in our electric cars?
Seventy-five percent of our, seventy-five percent of our houses polled don't have kids under fifteen.
My question was whether light, rapid transit had been taken into consideration. That was my question. I didn't come here to debate it with you.
I told you it has been.
My mind is open to the fact that it might be important in twenty years.
Mine was open to it twenty years ago.
As far as the report coming before council, my question arose out of council's reaction to this appearing on the agenda tonight and not knowing what it was. So Councillor Kip has the advantage of being on council during those years when those other studies were done. But we have new councillors that weren't. By the way, Jim, I was at Expo, too. I loved it. It was a great show. But I didn't come here to debate. Came to ask questions on behalf of some of the taxpayers of this community in hopes of refining and seeing this council run in a more organized fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just had one comment. Councillor Fuller.
Yeah, it's more a comment, not so much to question you, Kevin. By and large, the reports that are coming out are far better than they ever have been. And this one in particular irked me. Because when I see something, I really, trying to make sense of why something is coming to us after it's already been implemented, this, that, and the other thing. My brain's a mess sometimes. And to try and wrap my head around that without even knowing what they were talking about in the report was just a bit much for me. So that's why I went off on it. You know, ever since last year, my brain has operated a bit differently than before. But as I say, by and large, the reports that are coming out are far better than we ever had. You know, and I think that's a tribute to city staff and the new gen staff.
If I may comment to that, I fully understand. And the reports are much better, and things are vastly improved. But I've seen on numerous occasions over the last year and a half, council being asked to make decisions on material that they didn't see except for the couple of days before the meeting or perhaps at the meeting itself. So there has to be a better way of council and staff getting together to keep everybody informed. Council is elected to make informed decisions, not rushed decisions. All I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Brennan for the speaker.
Oh, I just, just, just wanted to remark that I think that the agendas are out for every councillor by, I think, the end of the day Tuesday. So if there are questions with regard to specific items on the agenda or specific need for clarification, plenty of time between then and Monday.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Move to adjourn? My consent.